Good morning, everyone. Today is June 12th, my dad's birthday. It's 9:00 a.m. I just saw that in the... This is a regular meeting of the Tass County Board of Commissioners. I hereby call this meeting to order. Call the roll.
Chairman Benra.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present. Therefore, would please stand. Commissioner O'Donnell would like to introduce our inspirational motion presenter today.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, viewing audience and members that are present today. I'd like to ask Marissa Martinez to come and give a prayer. She is a 2017 graduate of Tass Academy, a salutatorian in her class, attending the Ozark Bible School. She also was with me at the governor's prayer breakfast in 2017.
Dear Heavenly Father, we approach you in humility today, asking for your wisdom and your guidance, Lord. We ask that you would give us the strength to make the decisions, Lord. Give us the decision-making skills, Father. But we understand that all good things come from you and that all of our efforts are made unless you give us the strength and the knowledge, Lord. We ask that you would not only give us the knowledge, but that you would give us the character to fulfill everything that you have called us to do, Lord. I pray for each leader that is present here, that you would place in their hearts that which is pleasing to you to do, Lord. And I pray for our community, that you would grant, Lord, that you would grant strength to our children, Lord, to the elders in this community, Lord, that you would grant health and that you would grant them with the resources that they need to succeed, Father. We look to you. You are our help in all that we do, God, and we'll give you all the honor and all the glory and all the praise. And I ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ the Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Chairman, would you leave us a little bit?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Before we approve it, commissioners, I would like to remind you, and of course, we do have that forward to act on the ordinance, so there's another 10 to 5. Commissioner Diego should be here, he's just going in late. So I submit motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move to chairman.
Second.
Motion to have a second. Call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Benra.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is citizens' concerns. Any citizen wishing to address the commission on any issue on the agenda that you want to stay here for or whatever the case may be, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time, please come forward and state your name for the record. Hearing the same, then, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the May 15, 2018 regular meeting minutes. So who is...
Second.
Motion to second to approve the May 15, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Benra.
Yes. And be it approval of the May 22, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion to second, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Benra.
Yes. Under Department Matters, Item AKA is approval of the 2018-19 Lodge Tax Board Grant Recommendations. Those will be presented by our desk secretary, clerk Ms. Valerie DePlay. Good morning, Valerie.
Good morning. So yes, I have the recommendations for the fiscal year 1819. We had about 27 applicants. There were probably about five or six that were new. And if you have any questions or if you want to make any alterations, let me know.
Reminder, the committee are all made-up, involved people that we have appointed.
Yes, and they did. I was with them all through the day. It was a long day. They asked many questions, and we did have a new member, so she did ask a lot of questions, and we had to really look at a lot of the stuff that they brought in, so she could understand.
Okay.
Move for approval on the proposed Lodge Tax Board Grant Recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the 2018-19 Lodge Tax Board Grant Recommendations. Call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chair Benra.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Valerie. Tell the committee that we really appreciate the discipline of all the problems they have a lot to weigh, and they do a great job.
Yes, I hear well. Thank you.
And be it discussion of draft ordinance related to location and approval of speed humps. Those will be presented by Mr. Ramon Pacheco and Mr. Brent Hargeneal. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm with the commission. Ramon will do most of the presentation. Ramon came up with this initial draft, going that we needed to change our speed hump ordinance. Our last one was from 2005, and it certainly needed updating. The attorneys have not reviewed this yet. This is the first cut of the ordinance, so we wanted to bring it to the commission now and see if it can turn out before we send it to the attorneys. I'll turn it over to Ramon now.
Chairman, I'm going to call the roll.
Tass County Resolution Number 200645 is the old speed hump resolution. It's pretty vague. What I went and did is kind of itemized everything. How, when, where, how, when, who, all that little stuff. Not a lot of changes, just more itemization, just a little bit.
Quick. Go ahead, Ramon.
The old one, like I said, was pretty, just like a rock on the head. It has no descriptions, no... And again, it was created in 2006, where it was just very direct, very direct. We've had a lot of issues with speed bumps recently, questions, comments, concerns from the public, from the commission, from everywhere. So what I did was just break it down, kind of make it a little more user-friendly as to how they're going to handle it. I still have to get input from first responders and law enforcement as to what they think of this, but this is what I'm heading. Some questions?
In one comment that I have, and the only hard part I really have is... There was a 92 ambulance, buses and buses, and fire equipment. I'd like to see something added to this to where there needs to be an approval by our county fire chief and the district chief, add it into this, complete their review. Now, I know your model of a speed hump is a really good one. You've got over that with me, and I agree totally with that because my understanding is we did this when I was working fires, so it doesn't that. And Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you should be able to do at least close to speed hump of limit without disruption or of your vehicle operation. So the model that you discussed with me, I think, is a really solid one. It's the longer one and with the flatter top and stuff like that. I would like to see something added with fire and EMS recommendations, however we can word that in there, and sure, super, they can drive kind of quickly at times. And so that's just something that I had in the past. Now, the site distance, reason that we need to stop here on the I U B, I really think we should define adequate site distance, but I'm not sure, Ramon, if there's a boilerplate set 500 feet or something like that from corners, I don't know if there is something that we can get a definitive number. And then also the distance in between speed humps, I think, is another distance. If there's something out there from other ordinances that maybe you can review that makes sense to you, I would support that.
Actually, there's the Mexico DOT final December book that's in there. Just had to dig it out. Okay, put it on there.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Section 1, item H, I do not agree that the road must be paved. So I am not in agreement with that. I don't care about your justifications. I know there are other types of humps you can put in, those metal ones or dip. So I want that taken out. That's my opinion. I want to move on. What does I mean? I mind is totally unclear to me.
What section is it?
Section 1.
So the main 85% of speed bumps exceed the speed limit by at least five miles per hour.
What does that mean?
That means to justify a speed hump, I have to buy some traffic counters. And 85% of the traffic passing through that area must achieve the speed limit in order to justify that speed hump.
By five miles per hour.
Does that count? I'm a little confused. Who's the county?
I can actually place somebody out there, eight hours, 16 hours of county cars.
And also, it's also meant for the speed. In the past, the county had speed counters, like as you see, the state DOT puts that strip along the road. County used to have a permit like that. We don't anymore that's to get the speed limit of the road that people are doing. And I think we could probably borrow some from DOT to do that. Last time DOT did that for us was on the crossroad to Royo Seco, and we're looking at the speed for us.
So is it a counter manual counter or different? What is it?
I think it's a manual counter. In order to get an accurate reading, I actually have to get something on the radar, something that actually reads the speed.
Don't you think if someone saw you on the road, they'd stop, they'd slow down?
No.
Well, this is unclear. You think this doesn't make any sense?
So, Commissioner O'Donnell, my apologies. Commissioner, sorry. 85% of the traffic exceed five miles an hour over, so you'd then propose us to then consider speed humps.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe our attorney could be more that sort of proper.
And it's unclear how we're going to calculate that. Someone, that takes up staff time. Are you going to be able to buy, borrow those counters from DOT? So this, yeah, it needs to be... Section 2, location procedures, distance, that's section 2, item A. Where are your exhibits?
Section 2, item A?
Section 2.
That's, I would assume that the exhibits would be from the DOTM?
You didn't provide them.
Like I stated at the beginning, this is our first attempt at showing the commission this ordinance. It hasn't been found to legal. We wanted to work this early before setting it to legal, and then there'd be all kinds of changes. And we wanted to work with the commission first to focus on this option legal.
That's a good point. I appreciate that.
I want to fall under the site distance, but all the hunters from that...
So what is the recommended distance between speed humps?
In the past, we put on that, no less, no closer than 50 feet. That was the past, though, that was just kind of...
What does DOT standard say?
Like, how do we do that? It's quite a primitive, I recall, to me.
I'd like, next time this is brought back, I'd like that included on the distance exhibits that you referred to. Session 3, I do not agree with your proposed method. I think it should remain at 70%. You raised it 5%. You've created a ballot mail that people may or may not get, may not open. I want it to be include that as a possibility or what was in the old ordinance, the current ordinance, that property owners can go and collect signatures. So I think that mail ballot is inherently flawed, so that's why I want two ways to obtain that.
Who verifies the signatures?
I thought in the past, Ramon does, but... So I would like those two options and some kind of procedure of timeline that if you did a request, how long does it take? I know the old one says 45 days to bring it to us, and as you know, the Whit road residents gave you a petition, it was lost. She had to come and resubmit it. Then I was told it didn't meet, she didn't have enough property owners. I was told you were going to provide her with a list of, you know, from the assessors. So of who else, you know, apparently there were 11 short of the signatures. So have you given that to her yet? Have you given her that?
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, when I brought this issue up with you, you said you were going to provide her the list and that you would get, that you already have a list from the assessor's office. And because I wanted to contact Ms. Johnson, and you said you would take care of that for us.
Okay, well, then, this is probably, this does relate to clarification. Who provides the list? Do they have to go to the assessor's office themselves relating to, I know you said in this ordinance, you will provide a list for the ballot, but I just think that needs to be clear. I mean, I can work with Ms. Johnson to go over the list that she has and see who has been left out, but I don't believe she was notified that her petition, you know, didn't have the necessary signatures, but I will speak with her.
This is our report, I would like to come up if you would allow.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we did notify Ms. Johnson. She came into our office and we did, we had known that she had not met the initial number of signatures required. I do think it would be best if we were able to provide that list. I think it helps the community a lot to know what the parameters are, and of course, we also have something to judge the number of signatures by. So I do feel like it's probably an internal mechanism we need to work on. I think it's in the new ordinance. Because of the old ordinance, we would have petitions with homeowners from all over the neighborhood, not necessarily on the road, that they were actually trying to get a speed bump on. So I think if we provide the parameters, it does allow us there to have a better cross check at the end to tell them how close they are or if they met the required standards. That's been the problem with every, or the last few that have been brought to us, is they just didn't meet that first step of the 70% of property owners. So we haven't been able to bring it to the next level. And that's unfortunate that we, that it seems like we haven't done anything, but if the first step hasn't been met according to the procedures we currently have, it makes no sense to go on to the second step. So we are trying to work with the property owners to give them the parameters they need.
And I appreciate that. And for instance, going back to the Vias Conditos petition, that maybe it wasn't in your file, but it was delivered, we had discussion, and then it just kind of got stalled. And it would be nice if you, road department, county managers, would follow up on things that got lost, maybe the documents. This Vias Conditos petition was brought over two years ago, and I don't know what kind of documents or your office filing system, but I mean, you should have had it, and it would have been nice if someone would have reached out to them and said, you know, you don't have enough signatures, or gee whiz, we got this petition, but we're waiting for a couple commissioners to look at the road, and they never did. I mean, I would just like to see some follow-up. So these people, and I'm the only one, it's got two requests, and I would just really like these issues to be addressed. And I, again, I want to just go back to this thing about the road must be paved, I don't agree. There's other ways. You can put a dip in, you can put those metal ones in. Mr. Chairman, what's your opinion?
Well, Mr. Corbok, I just want to tell you about a site visit that Kaden and Mr. Hargeneal did about 10 days ago.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I do apologize for 2 years ago if we missed something at that time, but if the petition we received recently was the same one from 2 years ago, then once again, it didn't meet the first requirement of having the 70% of the property owners on that road sign the petition. In fact, from our site visit, we were able to realize that a lot of the signatures were from roads that were offered, meaning road that was being requested for the speed bumps. And so as is currently written, only property owners on the road that is being requested can sign the petition. So what we received recently, it still does not meet that first requirement that would force us to put it on for a decision to be made. So we are trying to work with those citizens to give them those parameters in order, and I do agree with you, we do have a better follow-up in this ordinance, as I believe. And if we got to prove that, we will. We can improve it in this ordinance and create the timelines, the 30 days, 45 days, whatever the board agrees to, and I think that would be good for us to have those parameters as well. So we're not trying to stall these petitions in any way, shape, or form, it's just they don't meet step one. We have to go back and tell them that they have their next step one and give them the opportunity to get past that first step.
And, Commissioner? O'Donnell would like to make comments regarding this. If you would yield them, then I'll come back to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to one H, if you can scroll down, one H, the street must be paved in one. I know that we tried, based on the subdivision, they have a dirt road, and they have dirt speed humps, and those are usually maintained by the neighborhood association, but even at that, they don't work. They deteriorate quickly. I just don't see us being able to put speed dips because those could become liability to the county as well. And in terms of any metal contraptions, that's a even worse liability, I would imagine.
Those are ones that you and him are insane.
In terms of the entire document, maybe you could undermine some of the stuff that is still existing. How is that done? When we approve of one, we know exactly what was changed and what was not. And I have learned, and I'm sure you feel the same, and I'm sure some of the commission does as well, that speed humps don't really work. People will fly through them. In fact, I've seen areas, roads that have speed humps, and they can just speed through them. If they have to go, if they want to go fast, they're going to do it anyway. And they're more of a deterrent for our emergency vehicles and our school lessons. Those are my thoughts.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I've driven this Linda Road, and the speed humps are there, the dirt ones. They work. I slowed down. I slowed down on Francisco Road with their speed humps. I slowed down. You can't drive that fast over them because you mess up your car. So I know there's a way, you know? I know it can be done. And those roads up the Vias Conditos are mostly maintained, even though they're county roads, they're mostly maintained by the homeowners. So if you want to put a clause in about maintaining roads with speed humps up there, I mean, they do it anyway. They'd be happy to maintain it. We hardly ever go up there unless there's snow, you know? There's still bargeages and culverts that are plugged. Doesn't matter now because of the drought, but if they get a big rainfall, it's going to mess up the road. Those culverts have not been unplugged. I made that request years ago, and they're still unplugged.
Back to speed humps.
But the speed humps, I'd like you to do more research on the dirt ones because if you tell me no, and I'm getting requests, this is the only area so far, and we can't do it, I think we can. I think we need to protect the health and welfare of the citizens up there, and I think that takes precedence over someone driving too fast and wrecking their vehicle. If they're not responsible drivers and they don't slow down, I think constituents are more important than vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, please, Commissioner Hargeneal, Mr. Ramon, or Mr. Pacheco? So if we're not meeting the 70 or 75% of those property owners on the main road, is that what was the road in question? Property owners at above the road in question? Yes. Okay. So do we change that for those that are also using that main road, that artery up there, secondary roads that still use that beyond, and include them as part of the 70%? Because I'm not using it anymore. I'm trying to figure out how we can get, if we can get the numbers there, then it eliminates 62% of the people in the area who want it, but then you're not getting the 70. And some people just don't like to do surveys or whatever in case of a side. I don't know if we can change that.
We kind of did talk about this, and Mr. Corbok talked about this as well. Sticking with the Vias Conditos area, there's only one ingress and egress for the roads there. There's a secondary road that you can get up in there, but for Circle Drive, as an example, Lodge Road is the only ingress and egress for Circle Drive, which then leads to Vias Conditos Road. So that's something that we might have to write into here. There's no alternate arterial roads into it then. In that case, then we would have to include Circle Drive and Lodge Road in this example. And then another thing that we debated about that's not addressing here is sticking to the Vias Conditos, the property owners that live further than the county road, they use that. Do we get their searchers as well because they use Vias Conditos ingress and egress? So then that number goes up. So even if we went back down to 70, there's a greater population... So even if we went back down to 70, there's a greater population of signatures that would be needed. So that's something we still need to figure out how to address in here. It's how, why we look at it. And if there's another way for Circle Drive to get, Circle Drive in, so I guess we're going to include those folks in the petition.
So because this is kind of still some of the, right? If we, with this input, maybe go back, we can go back to our petition saying, this is how we're going to try and make it, make the best possible for us to get these speed humps. Because currently it's not going to work. And as commissioners, we can sit here and argue about how we think you need to change it, but we're not going to change it because we're not getting participation. So we have to extend ourselves to more participation to secondary roads on that main artery road. Then we go back, bring it back, and maybe we get Vias Conditos Road with speed humps, whether the dirt or with some other kind of plastic speed hump. I mean, I don't know. I'm just trying to make it so that we get some clean direction. If we can advertise to our constituents, this is the criteria. Right now, we're kind of choosing back and forth if we'll figure out which.
It's very gray.
Yeah, it's too gray for us.
Maybe just get a little closer to block or what?
The old one was certainly a lot more gray. I want to go back to H real quick, and Romeno can say this better than I can. The reason that we don't want to put asphalt speed hump on a dirt road is during the snow plowing season, the winter season, the plow will take them off. Because you're pushing snow and gravel road. And if you hit it with asphalt, it'll just take the vibe. And right now, that's $3,500, that's $3,500 a speed hump.
And along those lines, what those signs get knocked out with the previous Public Works Director, one Joyce Mabon, and then Commissioner O'Donnell's district, person hit it, broke a tire on it, broke a ramrod, and ruined a tire. And we fought a tooth and nail not to pay the claim. So how is that fair? Mr. Spazin reminded me of that every day. That, you know, we fought a tooth and nail not to pay his claim. And it was our fault that we had not put the sign down. He didn't know it was there. It did extensive damage to his vehicle, and we fought the claim. So that just makes no sense.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm not talking about asphalt on dirt roads. I'm talking about dirt speed humps like Vista Linda. And I don't know if you noticed, but there used to be speed humps. There's still a speed hump sign going up to the clubhouse. And that's been there for years. So I don't know if you want to go confirm that, but we've got a speed hump sign up there that's been up there for years and no speed humps.
I hear golfing though.
Huh?
You're telling me you're golfing though?
Only if you go with me. So, you know.
That speed hump sign has remained there because there was a speed hump there that maintenance traffic erased it.
Right. Well, I think a dirt line would work, you know?
The dirt ones?
Not so expensive.
They cause maintenance issues where we're trying to rebuild them. They do slide. They will move if you hit them the right amount of plow.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, in this particular case, we're really talking about the summer time up there and the speeders up there and all the tourists and cappers. So, you know, they can be, who cares if they're destroying in winter? If we get snow and you actually go up and plow, which I know you have occasionally. But again, those roads that are county-owned are maintained by the residents up there. And if you're talking about how you deal with people that are not on our roads, I disagree with that unless you want to get the Forest Service. Because I think we're talking past our boundary of his property owned by the Forest Service. I'm not sure. But then you're talking about getting a signature from the Forest Service. I don't know how to deal with that.
Cheers, Commissioner.
I actually had a little conversation with Superintendent of the Forest Service yesterday. They would like to have the ability to discuss this as well. As being a property owner in this case, Vias Conditos, maybe have concerns about their equipment. If there's a fire up there, they have to take their big tankers. Those tankers are large, even ours. They're just concerned about that as well. So they have, I believe, the right to have a voice as well. When Commissioner Hario said on secondary roads, well, they are an end user of that particular road. Some other roads in our county, Vias Conditos, I think we could have BLM at the end or Forest Service at the end. So it seems like that would be a good discussion point. And we allow them to have a say and vote. And I think they should at least be able to voice concerns.
So that puts another layer of what I have to question. And you would have to get Ray Correll for Bradley Scott's signature of approval in that situation because they responded for it.
Well, I'm not telling you about those up there. I would like to accommodate a few, you know? So they have to slow down once or twice. But I'm not talking about the whole entire road, I mean, speed humps. So this is a particular situation. But I'm not sure. I think we're opening a can of worms with, I think we should talk to the Forest Service, but whether or not they have a say, I'm not sure because it's our county road. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell? So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, what is the proximity of homes to this road that you have in mind with speed humps?
There's really only one. The lady who has brought this back last two years, three years, she's about 50 feet and encounters the dust, the speeders. But I think, you know, we just need to get the homeowners association here too to speak about it.
And the rest of the homes are?
They're further away. There may be one more that's 100 feet. But we're really only talking about one area.
So the main concern then is the dust?
The dust and the speeding.
Yeah, the dust and washboard. Washboard's going down.
All right, we've provided staff with some good feedback. Commissioner Pacheco was very approachable. If you think of something else, Commissioners, I think we'd be able to, Mr. Hario, to share those with him. And I think that we could. Commissioner O'Donnell?
So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for presenting this, Mr. Hario. At what point will our attorney, will legal, you follow this and put in some more ideas?
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you. Mr. Pacheco, myself, and Mr. Porbo, I need to make adjustments based on this meeting. And after that, we should send it to legal. Probably end of this week or early part of next week. And then they can start their process. The other thing that we have to do is repeal the last policy. And heading back to your question from right here, it's really two different policies. So you won't really see anything coming over from the old one to the new one. And then the other thing that we need to decide, if it's an ordinance or if it's going to be a resolution. The last one was a resolution. Right now, it's in draft form as an ordinance. So that's another thing we can debate is the resolution. It's not the force of law, well, an ordinance is. So that's one of the other things we need to talk to legal about. Is it better in this case to be a resolution? It just might be, or give us quicker ability to make any changes.
Something that also I would a little bit unclear of, Mr. Chairman, is are we going to still continue using petitions as well as using the ballot in order to get a vote on those speed humps in that particular road? How's that going to work?
What I was thinking is we'll start the petition. We hit the 75%, that was about, send out the ballots to everybody in that area. And I do get the addresses from the assessors that vote list, like that was asked. And that's when the ballots will out and they are the new one. If the ballot does not return within the allotted time, 30, 40 days, whatever we decide, then it's not an act of none, we do not have these people.
And Mr. Chairman, I have asked that you have either or, the ability for the people to do the ballot or the ability for them to go door to door and reach out to their neighbors. So I want an either or, would carry it over from the older ordinance. I'd like those two. And I would also like that when you bring this back, that we have another discussion to allow any other, any residents in the county who'd like to comment on it. Because if you bring it back in a form that we're going to vote on it, it's too late. People can't comment. So I would like to see this brought back in discussion and we notify all the county residents to give them input. Let them give input. And then we bring it back for a final vote. That's what I would like. Thank you. And again, 70%. I mean, 75, I think, again, you're setting it up for this not to ever happen. 70% works for me. When we vote, I mean, usually, you know, majority vote, 51%. 75, it just almost, it sounds like you're making it really hard for our citizens to be protected from speeders and dust issues.
Anything in your argument for petition to lower that percentage but keep the vote either at 70 or 75% on the ballot? That way, it's a clear majority for once or not. I can see a lower amount, even to get the process started, that might be something that we can kick around and talk about.
Maybe like a 40, 60.
And something that's lower, it's achievable that way, so maybe. And then we got the ballot that determine the final outcome of the speed humps.
All right, thank you. I like the process. You bringing this to us very rough, and then we can add comments, and then you then get it to legal, then we just, that's the process. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, next item on the agenda I have denied is our consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda if you have an item that you wish to discuss further. We will bring that as the next number of visits prior to the public hearing, which is item 10. Item A is approval of fiscal year 2019-19 FGP SCP Contract 9-624-4000-0096. Item B is approval of renewal 1 to Contract TCC 2017-059 with UNM Health Sciences Center. Item C is approval of Contract TCC 2018-48 Community Against Violence Inc. Outreach Services. Item D is approval of renewal 1 to TCC 2017-124 with Roadless Rialto and IFPC Top of the World Litigation. Item E is approval of Amendment 3, Renewal 2 to Contract TCC 2016-040 WH Pacific Incorporated. Item F is approval of Renewal 2 to Contract TCC 2015-049 Solid Waste Hauling Agreement between Taos County and Pickle East Club Club. Item G is approval of Renewal 2 to Contract TCC 2015-048 Solid Waste Handling Agreement between Taos County and Taos Club. Item H is approval of 2019 Restful Clean and Beautiful Litter Control and Beautification Grant, Item I is approval of DWI Branch Agreement Project Number 19-D-G-G-30 for Funding of the Taos County DWI Program for Fiscal Year 2019. Item J, approval of Forlana Martinez and Valerio Montoya to attend the Restful Edge and NMAC Conference in Socorro from June 18th to 25th, 2018. Item K is approval for award for RFP 2018-10A Animal Sheltering and Care Services for Taos County. Item L is approval of DFAM Look Resolution Number 27, 2017-18 Fiscal Year Resolution Requesting to Adjust the 2018 Fiscal Year Final Budget to Accretly Reflect Budget Increases and or Decreases of County Funds Pursuant to Fiscal Year End Closeout Activity. Item M is approval of Budget Adjustment for Public Works Fund 0204-1600. Item N is approval of Budget Adjustment for Solid Waste Operations Fund 0202-1610. Item O is approval of Budget Adjustment for Fire Protection Fund 0209-1562-N1554. Item P is approval of Budget Adjustment for General Operating Fund 0101. Item Q is approval of Budget Adjustment Detention Fund 0226-1700-N1710. Item R is approval of Joint Powers Agreement Concerning Regional Economic Development with Enchanted Circle. And the last, item S is letter support for NCRTD, the Roya's Second Route. Commissioners, I have read the consent agenda. I seek a motion of approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve item K.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have item D. I'm sorry, it's D or the, D isn't David.
That, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda with the number of item D and K.
Okay, with K being first or all second, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, motion second to approve the consent agenda. The exception is by K, then item D. Clear call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
That's Chair G?
Yes.
Chair O'Donnell?
Yes. Item K for consent agenda pulled by Commissioner O'Donnell is approval of award for RFP 2019-10A Animal Sheltering and Care Services for Taos County. Please roll over.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a comment. I stand ready to approve this contract, but I did want to let the commission know data from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics relating to buying power. If we, this contract has been in place at the same amount for roughly 15 years. If we were to calculate that today, the contract should be 196, 399, 70. Today's buying power at the current contract price of 144 has a buying power of $105,000. This data comes from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. So I want to just point out that, food for thought. And this whole talk about we give dogs more money than seniors, then let's do something and put more money for seniors in our next budget cycle or six-month budget review. I'm tired of hearing people on the campaign trail say, oh, let's cut the contract. Well, in reality, their buying power is only $105,000 today. We really should be getting 196. But that's my comment. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the animal sheltering and care services for Taos County.
One second. All second, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion in a second to approve item K, which is approval of award of RFP 2018-10A Animal Sheltering and Care Services for Taos County. Clear call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice to K, who's?
Yes.
Chair O'Donnell?
Yes. Okay, next item is item D, approval of renewal 1 to TCC 2017-124 with Roadless Rialto and IFPC for the top of world litigation. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just wondering, wanting to get more information on that. More elaboration on what is this, what's going to happen with that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, this is just to extend the contracts. Our bid is to award the contract for an offer of 150 minus what has been built. At this point, we're carrying over the balance of 150. We're carrying over the balance of one thirty-six, three fifty-one, and during our additional year, the last report I have from attorneys was we did live to fight another day, basically at the last, um, like in the straw, you know, secure the people's speak, but basically the last trial that we had or hearing that we had, we did survive another day and then we're continuing to fight going forward. So I don't know if any specifics of that, Mr. O'Donnell.
So, Mr. Chairman, if anything, unfortunately, we could have that discussion in, say, a session.
And in, in public, just briefly, there had been a motion to discuss filed by Ojake Queblos challenging the service of this matter on them by prior counsel. And we won in a court hearing a couple of weeks ago, and the court found that the service was proper. They did allow that matter to be appealed under the Court of Appeals in its called in a, in a, in a law actuary matter. So that will be appealed, and we are continuing the discussions. But we will, we will brief you on this in close in the near future.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, Commissioner?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second. Okay. Motion a second to approve the renewal to TCC two thousand seventeen dash one-two-four with Roadless Rail and I F P C for the top of world litigation. Clear callable.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chair Gage?
Yes.
Chair O'Donnell?
Yes. Okay. Next item is item ten, public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero-five, which is an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of, uh, the county of Taos, New Mexico, county educational grocery receipts tax improvement revenue bond series two thousand eighteen for the purpose of providing funds for public school capital projects and top campus instruction program for Taos municipal school district, now school independent school district and Questa Independent School District, with the UNM Taos branch community college vault are within Taos County. This will be presented by our manager and representatives from RBC.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, I wanted to ask, why don't we not include the Mesa Vista schools that are in Taos County?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I'd like to answer that when this originally came, um, in this iteration back in twenty thirteen, I do recall Mesa Vista attending the commission meeting and asking the same question, and I believe that the answer to them was they were not included in the original ballot question. Therefore, they could not extend the item to Mesa Vista Schools. So that would often be a question that'll come up again in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, when it sunsets, if they want to go back out again. But that's what I recall from twenty thirteen.
And I do agree, and I do, I ask that question back then. Why were they not included? Do you understand?
Do you think they were included in the one that passed the voters? Well, never got to the voters of Everly Town for Rio River County. I wonder if they included. I believe they were included in that one. And to get back to Commissioner O'Donnell's question, I can't answer that right now. I can look into that further, but I believe at the time, it was the financial advisor representing the schools said, Dr. Ford, and I don't know if, I don't know. I don't want to lead you to a false statement, but I believe they were just not brought to the table at that time.
I would like at some point in this process to get that clarification. Still wondering.
And let's see if that wasn't included in the fail through Rio River County. Let's make a pass.
Because they, they two voted in this process, yet they don't get any money off of it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, just a quick question. So is this school is recalled within Taos County?
No, it's part Rio River, part Taos.
And how much is, uh, how much falls within Taos County?
Those schools, the school is in Rio River?
The building is in Taos.
Taos. The building is in Taos.
The student population kind of drives it. Is most of the student population from Rio River County?
I think it's both.
Yeah. As first I heard, I'm totally behind you. Let's look into this and find out what we can do, if they should be included, what, you know, so let me, since I just heard of this this morning, let me take a look. This ordinance, uh, thinking it through, we do, let me explain the ordinance, and I think there is an opportunity to come back and address this before the bond sale closes. Let me, let me take a look at the statute. It does specifically outline if you have so many students outside of the county, are you eligible and things of that nature. So I'm not sure what happened in twenty thirteen that wasn't involved at that point. But, Mr. Cordova, we will certainly look at that and get an answer for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Representative Commissioner Crispin here with the Mottos Spurling Firm and Alakirki with Bond Counselants of the County. Uh, just, I'm here with Eric Carrigan with RBC Capital Markets, who will go through the numbers for the bond sale, uh, the terms of bonds with you. But I thought it makes sense to go through the ordinance in whatever detail you wanted to, to make sure you're comfortable with that. And I'll kind of go thirty thousand pages. We can go lower if you want to. It's, you know, forty pages. But let me start with, I gave you an updated version today. The only change is the finance authority calls historically, once these transactions were done, starting in two thousand three through two thousand thirteen, there is an agreement with that called a direct deposit agreement, where these education grocery receipts tax revenues go straight from taxation and revenue to bank. BOKF is the current name of the bank. They then funnel the monies out for debt service or for the projects. The New Mexico Finance Authority has the same exact process, only they call it an intercept agreement, not a direct deposit agreement. In talking with their lawyers, who've been very easy to deal with, uh, they just said, can we keep it an intercept agreement? Because that's our order through. So I went through, which made it an intercept agreement. It has zero practical impact to the county or to BOKF or to taxation and revenue. You'll just be signing an intercept agreement instead of a direct deposit agreement. It doesn't impact the twenty thirteen bonds, which have a direct deposit agreement, because at the end of the day, they both do exactly the same thing. So that's the change between what you had in packets and what we have in front of you this morning.
And to confirm on that, we have met on this, you know, this is the third kind of time we've, we've met on this. I think the nuts and bolts of it, what will make me concerned is the final numbers going to the schools and to UNM? And is it, as we projected, more money being available to them doing it this way than it was the previous?
Yeah, I'll let Eric talk about that. Uh, I can tell you just from the legal side of it, uh, your cost of issuance definitely is over. The finance authority doesn't require, uh, public disclosure that you were going out to public market and sell these. That is one expense. But, Mr. Eric, and that's right, this wheelhouse where you will run through that. But as a preliminary matter, yes, the cost of issuance between them being a lender versus a public offering or somebody else being a lender are lower, it has to be that.
Do you have an estimate of how much?
Uh, you know, just from the legal fees, your fears probably say that thirty thousand dollars by not having a public market, um, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars based on what would have been done for disclosure, which is the SEC compliance aspect of that. If you are selling bonds in the public market, the SEC, because their securities oversees that, and so there are rules and regulations that apply to that, that from a legal standpoint, we need to make sure you're in compliance with that, this preparation of an official statement, which obviously has got the background of the county, the credit, the projects, where we're doing, and preparation of that and compliance with the legal standards. It's usually for a deal this size, from twenty-five to thirty thousand. Applying speed to that, Eric, it's certainly to the cost of issuance based on what the finance authority is charging versus what it might have cost for the lender's discount in marketing this in the public market versus a private place.
And what I'd like to see is if, whatever the most general overview you can give, and then I will open up to the public hearing portion, if there's any public comments, then as soon as all of those are in, um, you would address those, and then any further questions from the commissioners. So, so I'm not redundant here.
Absolutely. I, I have zero need to stand up here and argue a lot of the money, so.
Only because we have talked about this, and we all know it's a great thing that it's happening, so.
So I will give you literally the shorthand. This ordinance approves the bond. The pledge is limited to the educational grocery receipts tax. I think that's the most important thing, because it is not a general obligation of the county. If there is a shortfall in any debt service, the lender, the bondholders in previous issues can only look to the education grocery receipts tax of the county. Uh, these, as we talked about, owed the benefit of the school districts. Uh, the interest rates will be, they are set now. Eric will go through that. We will get a final certificate signed, which is delegated to Mr. Cordova to sign once we have that approved. One change, which is consistent with twenty thirteen, but is new to the discussion, is the acquisition of a reserve fund insurance policy that is common in the public finance market. What that does is it allows you not to fund a reserve fund, which is kind of a safety net with bond proceeds. Instead, pay a much smaller premium for the policy, uh, and that frees up those proceeds still for projects out in the school districts. Uh, the finance authority is the purchaser of the bonds. Uh, we can talk more about that if you'd like. Again, the terms, and Eric will go through this. That ribbons forty page document, most of the document relates to how the bond works. Uh, and it's consistent with the all the prior issues up to this point. By going to the finance authority rather than the public market, it does not change the nuts and bolts of legally how this works. You are not adding any responsibilities, obligations beyond what you already have in place. This reserve fund insurance policy is through the same insurer that the reserve fund insurance policy for twenty thirteen. They are not adding anything in addition, but I just bring that to your attention. So there, that, that's really it in a nutshell. I, to me, the most important thing is understanding that the pledge, that it's a limited special pledge, and send the numbers which Eric will go through. So I'll, I'll come back after their questions.
Okay. This time, I'll, Eric, with the public hearing committees.
Uh, Chairman, Members of the Commission, Eric Carrigan with RBC Capital Markets. Just to directly answer your, your previous question before I deal into the presentation, uh, the savings going through the New Mexico Finance Authority versus the public market saves the county or generates an additional proceeds of approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we'll, we'll walk through the numbers. Uh, I, I, there is a presentation that is before you, uh, and I want to just address a couple of, uh, one thing that, that was a change from the last presentation that I provided. So the bond ordinance provides an additional bonds test, meaning that the pledge revenues is a hundred and fifteen percent of the maximum combined annual debt service. However, the two thousand and thirteen bonds have an insurance condition, same insurers as, that's providing sure to preserve on these bonds, that requires an additional bonds test of a hundred and twenty percent of maximum annual debt service. So what that requires, requires that the, the annual debt service or the pledge revenue be a hundred and twenty percent versus a hundred and fifteen percent. And ultimately, what that does is that it reduces the amount upfront to the school districts, but generates the same amount of proceeds over the full life of the, of the borrowing. So on the numbers that, that we will talk about today with the debt service coverage, uh, the county is able to generate seven point two-six million of upfront money today. Uh, projecting out the current revenues of the, of the educational grocery receipts tax, the county will be able to generate an additional three point two million dollars of proceeds for, uh, the educational facilities in two thousand and twenty-three through redemptions and excess, uh, excess revenue. So the total projected combined revenues for county educational capital projects over the next five years is approximately ten point four-six million. I just want to caveat that the three point two million that I talked about, if, uh, educational grocery receipts tax revenues come in stronger than, um, anticipated, that number will go up. If they come in lower than anticipated, that number will go down slightly. We have provided the redemption analysis in the presentation for you to see. We've assumed, uh, three million, six hundred and fifty thousand of, of annual revenues, which is the, uh, which is the average of the last three years, knowing that the last couple of years were, were, uh, were pretty high because of the activity of the Taos Key Valley. We wanted to make sure that we were conservative and not overestimate what those revenues were.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell? Uh, one of the things that I would like to see, Mr. Chairman, is, is this GRT has been in existence, it's education. Educational GRT has been in existence for a few years now. It's one of the things that I would like to see from the schools that are benefiting from this, is some sort of report as to what improvements have been made from, from these monies that have been earned. I'm surprised that no one from the schools is here today who thought that they would be in some interest.
So I think, oh, because we had those early meetings with them and stuff, but we did ask, make that request of them for future projects and past projects. It's the, if we did that.
Um, Mr. Cordova, what's your thoughts on that?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I'll, you reach out to the schools and request that they come and present it later, please. I, uh, I agree that it'd be good for us to know what, um, that money's going towards so that this, the commission is aware. I think it's fair.
It's fair.
So I'll reach out to the superintendents individually. Hopefully, the, my message is clear that we're just asking for a reservation.
Right. And I think we, we ask each other that, that question, and I think the, the rest of the public, the taxpayer deserves that right as well.
Right. So we can help in the passage of it in the future. We can back that up, knowledge of where it went.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Larry, maybe, um, it's by important to, just reminding the schools, it is the capacity of the county. This is the, the county's GRT increment, and it's, the voters chose to pass those proceeds out to the schools, but yes, it's the capacity of the county. So I think it is a fair request for the commission to find out where that means going.
Thank you.
Can I just ask?
Sure. Commissioner O'Donnell?
You're saying the schools get seven point two million upfront, but we're issuing nine million in bonds. Let's see, a seven point seven, seven-five. Uh, I just thought we were, can you explain? I, I felt we were.
Apologize, I was being a little dyslexic there. It's actually seven point six-two and not seven point two-six. Um, and, uh, the, the ordinance was originally an up-to amount, not to exceed nine million. So it was, it was an up-to amount, uh, but the actual, uh, the actual amount that will be delivered to the county to distribute to the, uh, to the schools and to, uh, Taos branch, uh, will be seven point six-two million.
And why isn't it eight million or nine million that I thought we were?
So, uh, when we originally ran the analysis, the, the bond ordinance has a debt service or additional bonds test of one fifteen. Uh, however, there, uh, the Build American Mutual, who is the insurance provider for the two thousand and thirteen bonds, had a requirement that that additional bonds test actually be one-twenty, um, so that the debt service, so that the debt service, the amount of annual debt service had to go down slightly. At the end of the day, though, that end debt revenue is used to prepay or redeem, uh, the two thousand eighteen and the two thousand and thirteen bonds. The two thousand eighteen bonds were callable at any time. It can be redeemed, uh, any time. So over the next five years, uh, the, the county will actually generate approximately , uh, three point, uh, six million, three point two and three six million of additional grocery receipts tax revenues, which will, the county will effectively issue a very short-term note to convert that money from cash in the bank to capital projects that the, uh, uh, schools in that Taos branch college can use. It's, it's basically, it's, it's effectively a way of turning that grocery receipts tax revenue into capital projects, because the law requires that those revenues either be used for the payment of debt service or the redemption of outstanding bonds. And if there are no outstanding bonds, that grocery receipts tax increment basically goes away. So we will issue a short-term note to, uh, to capture that, uh, that revenue in two thousand and twenty-three. And at that point in time, in January one, two thousand and twenty-three, that grocery receipts tax increment will expire, uh, because it was only valid for ten years in the county. So if it so chooses, it can go back out to voters, um, you know, subject to, I think, legislative changes, uh, can go back out to voters to reauthorize an additional ten years of educational grocery receipts tax, if it so chooses at that time. We can do that way before two thousand and twenty-three, just to ensure that it's there like a two-year cushion or something.
Where are we told this new method using NFA would save us nine hundred thousand?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if you, and I don't have it in front of me today, but we go back to the presentation of George Key Ball. but we go back to the presentation of George K. Bond. That was interesting. Their proposal had about 1.5 in total interest costs, where this proposal has 586,000. So what was mentioned earlier was just closing costs, just the backend closing costs that we would have gotten back. So we did save the both aspects. The other thing to keep in mind was the proposal that George K. Bond brought forward was very liberal. It was not as conservative as what is being presented today, which was my biggest concern because at the end of the day, this is a county tax. The county would have been on the hook for any shortfalls that would have been, that could have occurred. So being more conservative gives us the ability to make sure that money's there in the backend. Schools will still get, but they deserve a backend, but it would be clean and clear at that point. And like Eric said, if GRTs are better at taking a conservative approach, it likely will be better than worse, but we don't know that. If they are better, they'll have more money at the backend than they are being projected right now.
Is that related to the reissuance of the bond because there's more money or this bond, it's this bond, and they'll be able to collect more at the backend?
So this bond, when we set up like the original bond, basically with the mandatory redemption fund taking out the backend of the debt service? And the anticipation is if the numbers aren't just as presented, there'll be this 3.2 million at the backend. If it's better than that, there may be more money. If it's worse than that, there could be a little less.
And you don't have to reissue the bonds again for that extra money? It's already built in here?
No, I want to see these gentlemen again most likely at that time to go ahead and reissue that vast tranche of building money.
Okay, thank you.
Just something to clarify, I can break you out there. Just to clarify a couple of questions. The 9 million is driven by that, we started with that number, which was extremely generous based on the initial numbers from George K. Bond as a parameter. So that was very liberal that it didn't tie to the final numbers, and that's why that happened. The sponge bonds, by the term at the end, would be very short and a much simpler process than this in terms of it will have all the bells and whistles. So that'll minimize that. Then on Commissioner O'Donnell's question. We do have tax certificates from prior bond issues that do outline the project, so we can assist and give you. But so the schools should do it probably will, but certainly we will. We know we can, and so we will. Sorry, Eric.
But now, Chairman, moving forward, the schools will have to tell us upfront how this money will be spent? Is that, and then its relief? Is that, they will have to give us itemized list of projects for this money?
Yes, and that's driven, one, by you as the oversight for the commission, and the county would want to know that. And, two, the Internal Revenue Service requires that when you issue these bonds, that you have a very reasonable certainty, you know, reasonable expectations about how you're going to use it. And so that's why we have actually the list in the past, is the schools have to provide us so that we can give an opinion at the end that we are compliant with the IRS.
And so what do you recommend? The treasurer gives us those reports, the county manager, you do, to give us those kind of updates on how the money's being spent?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I think I can coordinate with the superintendents. I think that probably the best approach to have them come and directly mention, you know, the list was provided during this issue. I think we have that obviously with their ideas on how they're going to spend it. But I think it is okay to coordinate with them and just see if they'd be willing to come back and be here at least to talk about how they spent that money each year.
Eric, I think you have it.
Town schools had a variety of projects throughout the school districts. Pinyasco was specifying a purchase of property for their baseball field and some IT tech at one of the things. I think Questa was looking at improvement or building a stadium, not a stadium, but a stage or plate and stuff like that. I can't even call it. That's what I recall from the list that they had put forward. And then you were never pushed as part of the new building program.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they'll be able to access this money when?
As soon as it closes and we have access to it, they could come and submit requests through the treasurer's office.
In August, who's that?
So closing is scheduled for July 27. The funds are available on a requisition basis through the New Mexico Finance Authority. So I think the way I would anticipate it being is that the districts and Taos would come to the county with their request. The county would submit a requisition to NMFA, and NMFA would wire those funds to the district or contractor because they're performing that work.
So I just want to be clear because I did get a complaint from the Pinyasco schools that because they have to put in requests in August, they miss certain deadlines in their fiscal year. But the argument is they're going to get more money.
Yeah, this is for future stuff. I mean, they should, the stuff that's happening this summer is from the previous.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I would like to remind the board that if they would have communicated with the county earlier, we could have timed it out according to their schedule, but they did not communicate with us until last Monday. Therefore, unfortunately, we did push the schools back one or two. But I want to say that wasn't just our fault. We could have been communicating with earlier and we would have been ahead of the schedule if we would have known one or two months earlier.
But they'll get more money with this whole process and mechanism in the long run.
In the longer days, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
So with that, the all-in true interest cost is 2.668. This compares to what we showed you last month with 2.655. So we're right in line with what the expectation is. We've got other information in the packet that I won't necessarily go through unless you would like for me to. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Maybe this is a good time that I'll open up the public hearing, and that way if we have any concerns, and then if not, we'll wrap it up after the public hearing. This is a public hearing for ordinance 2018-05, which is an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of the county of Taos educational gross receipts tax improvement revenue bond series 2018. If there's any party from the public please come forward and be sworn by the head. During the scene, I'll hereby close the public hearing. Commissioners.
So just what are we paying on interest now? Was the final, is that a locked-in interest rate or is that a fixed rate?
It's a fixed rate through the life of the loan through 2023, and it's 2.668% of that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. I do have a question.
Yes.
The ordinance under 2018-05.
I'll go ahead and second Mr. Chairman, but no question. Take my values out. Questions? I gotta be there, sorry.
Back to Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm going to tell my own. It was his fault, he didn't pay attention.
But moving on to the discussion, I do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2018-05 authorizing the issuance and sale of county of Taos educational gross receipts tax improvement revenue bond series 2018.
So we cannot, we can't vote on this today? It doesn't indicate that. And the heading for today's agenda, whether it helps with discussion and consideration of the vote. It's pretty clear that we need to take more difficult on it today?
I would just throw in, and I'll let Rainey provide his office or counsel too, but it has been published in Taos days two weeks prior, more than two weeks. So the notice in terms of what's required in the bond ordinance and the finance laws, you're in compliance.
We're in for adoption.
And I think that it's been, because this was called as a public hearing, I think it's clear enough to go ahead and vote on it.
Okay.
Just want to make sure. I did.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Chair, guys. Chairman Carver.
Yes. Uh, guys, what was the answer?
Mr. Chair.
Where?
I can call you OG, Ottega Fergus.
Thank you, Ellen. No, you're stopped.
Thank you, guys, for everything. This is everything I'm glad. And I hope that we can get this back to the voters like in the next election cycle so that we know that it's here for another 10 years. I don't think we need to wait until 2022 in case there's a glitch.
And I, I want, Mr. Chairman, I want to hear about why it was left out. Can we, I mean, they do vote on this.
Well, yeah, so then the statute is clear development. And so let me find out where that is. Let me retrace the steps and make some calls if I need to, but I'll have an answer for you.
And then if we could be clear, say like nature has to approve this? Before, we approve it?
Before we approve it, the voter. Okay, so, excuse me, sorry, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. That historically was the way it was done. It was when they amended the statute in 2012. They had it where you could bypass additional legislative approval, leave it to you as the governing body.
If you didn't make significant changes.
Right.
So this would be.
Well, and I'm still curious whether, how that reads and how to take a look at that. But you might, I, we'll look at that. My feeling is that you, after 20 years as the governing body, would have to, I think it would fall to you, but I'll check.
And then we'll look, if real reba includes them, Commissioner, I would really expect that to go back to the legislature post-January 1, a new governor to, because the voters are more level when they pass a real reba. So I would say that probably is going to go back to them, just a guess.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next item is item 11. 11A is updated on trying to fish on various items affecting Taos County, but our manager, Mr. Mayor, will record it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a few weeks, but I don't have a lot of my report. I did one of the commission, I had a couple of conversations with Forest Service Superintendent and some of the district managers and to continue to move forward our agreement. They're very hopeful that we can get together an agreement that this board can review and accept in terms of doing collaborative work on things like roads, picnic, I mean, campsites, looking at easements, proper road adoptions, stuff like that. We actually even had a conversation about the cava guards as we discussed on Friday, and they agree that not every single cava guard that's out there is still necessary, and they're willing to look at that with us and kind of assess one at a time at this point. So just, I'm very hopeful. I think it's a positive thing, and they're the ones really pushing it. I agree that it's, the more collaboration we have with our federal partners, the better for everyone here in Taos County. So we're continuing to work on that. We had a review conducted last Friday. And I, on a personal, what I asked a lot about the forest, when are they considering shutting it down? And they have said that any label is very good and hopeful about Taos County is people have been following the rules and they have been following the restrictions very closely. So they're confident that as long as people are following those restrictions as tightly as they have, they'll keep looking at it on a day-by-day basis. But they're very close. They could have closed it yesterday. It looks like they may need it open through the week when they're waiting to see what kind of moisture comes. But it could happen. They're just grateful that the people at Taos County are really, they're following the rules. They're a little concerned about our visitors, and so they have asked if there's any way we can help get the word out to the visitors that are coming in to let them know what stage-two restrictions really mean, that there's no open fires and no chainsaws after 10, things like that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Were you able to find out where the Forest Service has gravel pits?
That is another discussion we had. They're not even completely sure, but as our discussion brought it tonight, and everybody's looked into that because they agree that it could be a good collaborative effort with us. They are making improvements to some of their roads. They got a brand-new creator, a big, huge creator, that they've been putting into service already. You'll see some of the forest roads, at least in the southern part of the county where I go for it, are greatly improved. They've done a tremendous job of main artery roads, cutting bar ditches, treating better drainage. And so it just, it's a different feeling with Forest Service. They're not trying to keep people out. They're inviting them in as long as they're coming in responsibly and treating the forest with respect. They're letting people into the forest. That's, they feel like they should do.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, if you could check on Hodges Road. There is no sign. I believe it's a Forest Service road. Someone asked, you know, where we have the sign that said, "Everiano," "Everiano." I believe that's a forest road, but I'm not sure. And I'm asked, someone asked if we could get a sign up there for emergency purposes on Hodges Road. So if you could check on that. And then I did have a constituent in Alvaya ask about a curve. And I believe that's also Forest Service road in our row two. And I'd like to, maybe if we could coordinate a meeting with this gentleman, he could explain the curve and the danger it poses and see if there's some way we could improve it. It's maybe a quarter mile from where the road turns into Forest Service camping area. But I guess Alvaya is our road in Forest Service. So we probably need to have them in that discussion as far as they want to fix that curve. So keep that in mind.
Well, thank you. And any other concerns that you have, I'll mean, bring them up to me. They are actually utilizing our accent today for meeting of their personnel. And so I just, I feel we have a pretty good working relationship with the Forest Service right now. I'm very hopeful of that, so. Also, let the board know that I will be attending a settlement conference on Friday. Carviski, known as an NMAC assigned attorney. So I'll report back on that after that's complete. And that's all I have in terms of my update. I stand for any questions before I go on to any meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Donnell, and you, any word from State Mexico Gas Company on the matter with regards to broker provisions?
No specific response on that specifically. I've had a couple of conversations with the secretary, but nothing about that since we talked. He was grateful for the letter. He appreciated that and said he was going to help, that would help him in some negotiation with Mexico Gas. But after nothing, I'll go ahead and follow up with him.
The concern I have is the last, last rainstorm that we had, it wasn't major. And I know Commissioner Chairman Fambro had brought up the fact that some of the areas where the gravel has been, was removed or drainages were created, left some of the hillside, I think, vulnerable, exposed. And so that last rainstorm that we had, quite a month or so ago, it wasn't major, but what it did do is that it did move a lot of rocks. A lot of rocks came down with that. Thankfully, they were removed either by the state police, the highway department, or by the public event. And I still happen to be traveling to Navo at the time after that rainstorm. And so I can only imagine what can happen if there was a monsoon season and it rained a lot. So that hillside is going to move quite a bit. And so it still remains vulnerable. Whoever was supposed to go back and remedy all of that earth and all of that rock that was moved or exchanged, replaced, I think it stands to be quite viable if something happens later on. And I hope it doesn't need to.
Mr. Chairman, and on that note, could you please find out when they're going to take all those signs down? There are a number of signs still up. And, you know, probably 10 at least. It'd be nice to know when they're going to take the signs down, who's responsible for taking all those signs down that the gas company put up.
I mean, the project was awesome. It worked really well, it appears. They did a good job. Let's not taint it with, you know, something that can happen if they finish taking care of them there. And the other item, Mr. Chairman, is on the, I'd like to see it on the agenda. Sometime soon is the cell phone, the abandoned cell phone tower at the old National Guard Armory. I believe a few weeks ago, we asked for some sort of an opinion from legal on what the status of it, of that contract would be. It was executed many years ago under Forest Manager Sammy Montoya. It's not in use at all, the public, the federal government have been against it. Just wondering as to when we'll be able to take it down if that can.
Something on that is there's now very limited cell service in Alpro area and at the Blakeney Land there's almost nothing.
Okay, I will look into all those things and we will get that back when we can.
I mean, if we were to take it down, we could scrap metal. I don't know what the contract says, if the owner is supposed to take it down or if we have to take it down ourselves, if we get scrap metal. And then I just wanted to ask if you could give me a timeline on when you're going to get those tires taken away from the X Center?
Yeah, we hope to get that really soon. I think we had plans for last week or this week, so I hope we'll get that done very recently. We are aware of that issue.
Okay, next item on the agenda is special meeting, a joint meeting with the village request for post for June 18th, 2018.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, a request has been made by the village to have a joint meeting that dates next Monday. The request for the village is a 2:30 start time. I've had some conversations with our attorney in regards to Chevron, Pete Dominici, and he would like to address the board prior to our meeting with the village. So we're asking if we could have a special meeting at 2:30, which would primarily be an executive session with Mr. Dominici to go over what he's come up with, his recommendations to the board. He has a draft memo that he'd like to, to share with you and just have discussion prior to us going to the joint meeting. So I would like to go.
Special meeting?
2:30. He feels.
Executive is a.
2:30. If we could do the 2:30 executive and then I'll exit that meeting and do a joint meeting with the village, I think we would, the board would be better prepared after hearing from Mr. Dominici prior to going to the joint meeting and other issues with Chevron.
Is it, I'm not sure.
He'll be here.
I may not be.
Yeah. Mr. Romero, we have some.
The whole meeting, first meeting might be only.
Who's Dominici?
Our attorney.
It's our attorney for the Chevron, specific for the Chevron issue. So if I could get an approval of a special meeting at 2:30, I would appreciate that for Monday so we can notice that. And it will be a special meeting so we can have the executive session.
I'm really good for Monday.
Yeah, there's a question. They got to bring Tous County Energy Bar.
Oh, that's okay. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. That meeting is, Monday, 18th. Here in Tous County, commissioners, and I'll wait to get to this.
I guess, I don't know if we need to roll call vote on that. All the favors that I have.
I know.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you. And that's all I have at this time. Just a reminder of the conference next week in Socorro. So I believe most of you guys are registered, ready to go. We have a few staff members as well going, so you know, it's a slow week here in Tous County and a busy week in Socorro. And I'm glad we're not hosting this year.
Yeah.
Take personal time. I need someone to do that.
Mr. Corvo, I earlier I reserved a room, but then I don't know if it's still available for anybody that might be.
I think I got that.
That is a mission. Almost, but I've.
All right.
Thank you.
Is anybody other than the Admiral playing golf because I'm not playing with him?
Not playing.
Okay. Item 12A is we've been to consider a future commission meeting. First off, I'd like to say is our fire chief has prepared a fireworks resolution that could be presented to us. Possibly the 18th meeting as part of the special meeting. Keep in mind, it is illegal for us to ban fireworks and.
Did it reduce them?
Yes. And the only person that can do that is the governor of the state of Mexico. But what we can do is ban certain fireworks, which our ordinance has had since 1990, 89 or, I mean 99, 89 or 90. And so, and the other thing, the town of Tous has sent on a letter on behalf of the town council and the commission to vendors asking that they do not sell. And that's all we can do. But everything that can be banned, keep in mind, has been banned. That's burial ground model devices. Nothing else can be banned and those are our second.
So Mr. Chairman, with regards to that, I remain concerned, you know, if you travel to Rio Reba, that's all we had, festival, all of the Indian, the Native reservations. They're all, this last week, they're all setting up their tents. The vendors are setting their tents to sell fireworks there. If we can't completely ban them and the reservations, we can't do it, could we possibly have a letter constructed and given to the governor so that she could, if she's the only one that's able to ban?
And she would have already had to do that by last week, so.
Well, it's still fireworks season, so I'm wondering if we could maybe still.
Yeah, there was a two program. Fireworks industry put in a provision in the ordinance a few years ago when we were fighting it and almost won, that it had to be done by very severe drought indices, which we're just hitting at this time. So it's almost never that we would make the timeframe, so it'll get changed now, hopefully. That's up to the PRC.
Still wish it could change though.
Check out the money that was exchanged there. So yeah, our resolution, we can send that to the governor's office. So hopefully I'll be on the 18th. Second thing is, I have a whole of my emergency meeting in Albuquerque tomorrow at 11. I don't know if the issue is, but it's something very important. Hopefully it does not affect Tous County. If it is, I will have the manager brief the commission, but we don't know what it is until we're in executive session. And the last thing is, on behalf of Vice Chair Diawos and myself, there was two programs that were cut with the federal funding that came to the seniors. And that's the rest and the homemakers program and, you know, the home visit program. I would like staff to please give us number, we would like staff to give us numbers of what possibly doing that on a contract basis, the home visit program, because I think it's a very good program. I know that a 102-year-old member of my family used that program and had really been a lot and that's one of the ones that my class. And if we could do something on our own to come back on a contract basis, right, is a cheaper way to do it. I understand there's complications within our own system that put a block on it, Mike presented it before, but I, I disagree with it. And I think it is something that we can do and it's not going to cost us a lot of money. So on behalf of both of us, we'd like to champion this program and see if we can at least get that one going and then, and then we'll take another chunk whenever we're financially able. I know it's not in the budget, but possibly at, at least at some point, after some review of something and it's just bad timing that, you know, we find out that you cut the budget, preliminary budget's already in. So it, you know, just take DFA approval and other things of that. Like, like at least see the numbers and see if we could at least get part of the much needed program back. And I think Mike has figures on it that he can get to you guys real soon. And I hate to push out, but I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this. I just ran into a constituent of Commissioner O'Donnell's recently that was really missing the program and would like to see it reinstated. And I spoke with Vice Chair Diawos and he agreed the whole part of it. So I think it's something at least on behalf of half of four here today, and Tom's getting at their names, so I don't keep telling them to consider it too. If you would discuss that with Emerson, like that I would break the name exact. We have, myself and Vice Chair Diawos have discussed this and would like to see some numbers and see if we can still. That's all I have. Anybody else?
I guess I'd like to bring back the Vice Quinado's speech, oh, decision on, the people have been asking for the next meeting, which is the 27th. I hope you can get them the documents so they can get the additional signatures. They have also asked if I would be available this Friday at 2:15 to review the road, go out there. And I would like to invite the county manager and Mr. Carmio so we can be clear on what exactly they're asking for. So I do hope you'll have those documents to Vice Quinado because they are asking to resolve this issue sooner than later.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, once again, it does come down to the meeting, the requirements is step one. If they can meet those requirements, we'll bring it. If you want us to bring it without that, we'll bring that as well. We won't be able to recommend it. So I will definitely work on getting it on the next meeting, one way or the other. But I do want the board to know we still have not met the requirement, number one, getting to 70% of the land ownership.
Were you able to give them the accessories, documents so they can review to see who else is needed?
We have not done that quite yet. We had this discussion Friday and then about that map, Corvo, yeah, we will commit to getting that map and hopefully they'll have enough time by the June 26 meeting to meet their requirement, if that's going to be required. If it's on that meeting, we'll put it on there and hopefully they can meet their side.
Thank you. So 2:30 on Friday or 2:15? They've asked, any other commissioner would like to go?
Mr. Chairman, who's going?
I can't. I'll, for something I forgot to mention, I'll, I'll get into it, so Mr. O'Donnell is not, I, I will.
As I mentioned, I'll be at a settlement hearing in Albuquerque tomorrow, so I will be able to attend.
Mr. Carmio, would you be able to go?
Be there by 2:15 because I have a 3:45, so.
More than likely, there's just no outside chance, but the order might clear of being to move.
Do you have a place where they eat?
Up at the clubhouse in Vice Quinado at 2:15.
I believe I can go with Mr. Chairman Corvo.
All right. Any else, Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, thank you.
I just reminded you of something of why I won't be able to attend. My son won an essay contest on renewable energy and is in Washington as a result of that. And tomorrow he meets with our congressional delegation. If anybody has anything they want him to bring up on behalf of us, let me know and I'll text him tonight. And I think this senior thing cuts for something that he's already prepared to talk about and to ask. Any of them something for Tous County? So just three delegates from Tous County that are there. If you have any names specific for all of them, he starts at 10:30 in the morning and finishes at 3:30 in the morning.
Pretty cool.
I got to pick them up Friday.
Mr. Chairman, if I go, are you planning to attend as well? Kansas, the White Scobie?
Yes, I'm texting right.
I do only have to, Tom, I don't know if Tom will be there, so. Turns out in town, so we can speak to. Commissioner Diawos?
I wouldn't be able to. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt, but I definitely would like that, you know, there'll be this cross way for trade. If this resolution is done for the future, it's going to be a better path. So I'm sure there's other roadways that we're in the country and watch for.
Probably easier to do it on a trial basis like there because of the. Just as a consideration.
Mr. Chairman, another question, Leandro, is there a land grant meeting tomorrow here in the chambers?
Yes, sir. I apologize for not bringing up, there is a meeting tomorrow at 10:30 here in the chambers, 10 o'clock here in the chambers, the same group that asked time.
Okay.
And I need to apologize for not bringing it up. I kind of mentioned it, asked me and then we just clarified the timing of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me. Anything else? Hold on, I have B.
I do have.
Okay.
Item B?
Yeah.
Opened business. I'd like to, staff, maybe we'll look into the Sarah Community Center and see what its status is. Is it still, is it a recognized WPA building? Reason being that I'm asking that we would look at considering future funding because that has entry status to the monument. I think that that community center can be used as potential retail of goods that could go into, into the monument. I just want to be able to see improvements into those areas that go in there. A lot more visitors and I think that can be a stopping area where you can see some old photos that we have here of the communities around and can get some, get Mike back into that community again. And I think that a financial line is a key word and the centers also is a key word. The other thing I wanted to ask, and I think that I know it may be asking for staff, but we've talked in the past about having satellite meetings in our districts, locations and or if we're going to be able to do tours of each district's community centers. This would be an idea because I, I'd like for the commission to see what, what issues I have in my district. I don't want to use my representation, but I've actually seen it and there's concerns in your guys' issues.
I don't know.
Zero. That's really important. So we'll start with that. What's up, yours? Just in case, I mean, I would say that it has to be anytime soon, but if we can consider that, maybe once every three months, a meeting somewhere, it might be a clerk's office might have to do handwritten notes or something, but we could provide.
Is that legal? Is that allowed? At some point, I thought someone said it was not legal, but is that legal? We can have satellite meetings of our regular meetings in Penasco, what question?
It's, as long as it's publicly noticed, we can meet wherever you decide to.
I'm not a digital.
The biggest issue is just the logistics, the logistics of it so that it can get recorded and noticed properly.
When a major change requires two weeks of homework, it's 72.
In a module, I have to just get extension cords on somebody's house.
And we have brought that as a community center in Penasco, so Mr. Sanzetti could actually record the meeting and start the mess.
All right. Next, announcements, it had to happen before this meeting, but Commissioner Romero has been designated, is our voting delegate for the NACO conference with Tim Higginby being the alternate. And that paperwork needed to be sent off yesterday, so it was done. Also, is there a voting delegate for Tous County? It's Commissioner Romero at the, at the. NMAC. So just as matter of record, if you go to the conference, I think he will be our, our voting delegate of both NACO and NMAC. Okay. Anything else? Item 13, discussion, consideration and decision regarding real property. This item can be discussed in executive session under the Open Meetings Act exemption 10-15-188, which allows for discussion of purchase, acquisition and disposal of real property or water rights by the public supply. Mr. Adio, was it your recommendation that the board go into closed session at this time?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Pleasure to the commission.
So move, Mr. Chairman, to go into executive session. Is it going to be here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you a second?
Second.
Any motion, a second to close session under the exemption 10-15-188. And we will be staying in here. Do you have an estimate of time required to this?
30 minutes? I think it'd be a fair estimate.
About approximately 30 minutes, Francis, 30 minutes. All right. Quick call the rule.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Diawos?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner speaking a motion to come out of closed session, so.
Second. Quick call the rule.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Chair Gago.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Audi, would you give a report as to compliance issue with the exemption 10-15-188 in this individual?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, we have discussed only matters that were properly noticed on the inception of the Open Meetings Act and no action by the commission was taken.
Motion to accept Mr. Audi's report to say that some...
Second, court call the rule.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Odom? Yes, Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Yes. I, uh, 14 adjournment.
So, second.
All care to say aye?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you all.